There we go. Okay. Sorry, it was me that had the volume issue this evening, of course. So I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:00 PM and I will read our land acknowledgement. It is with gratitude, the township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands acknowledges these lands and waters are the traditional territory territory of the Algonquin, Mississaugas, Mohawk, and Huron-Windat. To recognize the role the township must play, in truth and reconciliation, we also acknowledge the displacement of these peoples. Additionally, the township would respectfully acknowledge the First Nations Inuit and Métis people who still call this place home. We make this land acknowledgement to honor the indigenous ancestors who have storeded these lands and waters since time immemorial. This evening, councillor Lackey has sent his regrets due to an unplanned work commitment and we'll move on with the adoption of the agenda. Moved by councillor or deputy mayor Foddy, seconded by councillor Maybe, let the agenda be adopted as circulated. Any queries or questions in regards to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it is carried. Next item on the agenda is Declaration of Recunary Interest and a general nature thereof. Does anybody have an interest to declare this evening? I have no hands up. So we'll move to number five. There is no closed session and we have no delegations or briefings or public meetings. So we'll move on to number nine, which is staff reports. 9.1 Community Hall Standardization. Moved by councillor Maybe, seconded by deputy mayor Foddy, the committee of the whole recommends that council provide direction to staff to standardize community hall spaces and services provided and maintained by the township. At the committee of the whole recommends that council direct staff to move forward with option blank as outlined in report 2025-036. So the motion is on the floor and up for discussion. So if anybody would like to weigh in, let me know. Go ahead councillor Antoine Hartley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I guess I have one question first. Can you clarify the amount of revenue? Because there's a disconnect between the analysis one and the financial implications. Of first, it says thirteen, revenue of thirteen thousand five hundred and eighty for Sealeys Bay and then it switches and it says that's for Lansdowne.
Which page are you referring to in the, do you have it?
Two.
Page two on the report? So it's in the table?
Yes. So and in the analysis part, which I didn't print. Yeah. It's page seven for implications.
Thank you through your worship. I believe that the, in the analysis, the, the numbers have been flip-flopped by accident because the, the financial implications, those financiers are actually out of our booking program. So that, that is exactly what it is. I think just when, when the report was drafted that those numbers got mixed up by accident. So the actual revenues in the financial implications are accurate.
Okay. And secondly, just wondering about how this fits into the strategic plan. Cause one of the pillars is growing a livable community with great services. And I believe that our community halls should be easily used by everyone and we should kind of do everything in our power to equip them so that those space, spaces work well for, for everyone. So there's three options given, A and B, I, I see very little difference in the benefits or the disadvantages, except that one provides dishware, one doesn't, and is fifty thousand dollars more. Option C, which looks good on paper because it's money wise, but it actually provides nothing but some basic cookware to cook limited items, but then you have nothing to eat it from. Saves money for the township, but certainly doesn't meet the goals of that pillar. And from personal experience, the renting of dishware isn't all what it's cracked up to be as well. I know for my daughter's wedding, we rented Sealeys Bay community hall and we rented dishware and the logistics of that, especially if say the elevator is down, which it was a few days before our, the wedding can be quite a stressful sort of thing, as well as a, a safety concern. So I guess we can't. And I guess my other question is like, why can't we, this is one big shot, like one at the, of money. Can that be somehow budgeted for over two, three years maybe? Because of the fact that when I'm doing rentals in my own home, I budget over those. I don't decide I'm going to, you know, replace all of my cookware and all of my dishes all at the same time. And I'm just thinking if we can go a little slower to make it more economical for us. Cause I really do think it's important that our community has a place. I, I think of, of brides on a budget, basically that they have someplace that they can rent where they could get those sorts of things. And, and our, and once more, even though this isn't a volunteer aspect, it's another barrier sometimes for volunteers. If they don't have the equipment to use when they do rent them, rent it. So those are my concerns.
So you did not indicate which option you were interested in? Or would you like some more discussion before you?
If, if I had an option, I would go with, with B, which is replace everything, but do it over time, like not do it.
Stagger it between halls type?
Stagger it over halls, stagger it over, over different kinds of equipment. This year we do the dishwasher. This year we, we bring the vents up to snuff. Next year we do something else.
Okay. So you're in favor of number B, but with a staggered approach?
Exactly.
Go ahead councillor Kelman, and then I have councillor Maybe.
Thank you worship and through you. I have a similar feelings to councillor Antoine Hartley. I feel like, and I think this was shown at our last meeting, the delegation that attended and spoke to how he, his perception of some of the challenges to volunteerism in the community. I feel like our community groups have been pushed quite a bit in the last few years, adjusting to the changes that we have made in terms of formalizing rental costs and who has access and that kind of thing. And I am not saying that we shouldn't have done those things, but to me, right now, the, the cheapest option feels really extreme to remove everything. I think the safety things need to be addressed, countertops that aren't, can't be sanitized properly. I, I think there probably should be a dishwasher in Sealeys Bay, a, a commercial dishwasher. It sounds like perhaps that the oven needs to be removed from the meeting room in Lansdowne. I think there's things that need to be addressed right away. I don't know if we've had complaints from user groups about mismatched dishware or not enough of anything. I think if that were the case at this point, then they should be able to rent things if they're not happy with what's there. But I think probably for a lot of the functions that are happening in these spaces, the groups that are used to using the spaces know what's there and are content with what's there and to expect them to pay fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars to rent dishes and cutlery and glassware for a community event or a fundraising event, or even a private event, that really adds to the cost or eats into the fundraising efforts. And to me, the timing just feels off right now. Given the reaction that I certainly have had in the community, certainly in Sealeys Bay, and I'm sure some of the same reaction has come in Lansdowne as well, to the changes that we've implemented over the last couple of years. And I just feel like this would feel, even though I completely understand the reasoning behind it and I agree with having everything in line and it would be lovely to have, you know, matching dishware everywhere and everything up to code, but I, up to snuff, but I just, I think probably if we can stagger what we do, as councillor Antoine Hartley said, and that would lessen the blow and.
So you're in favor of option B?
A or B, yeah. And I would say that in terms of personal items being left, I don't think there was a mention about in the meeting room in Lansdowne, there's a locked cupboard. I don't think that's appropriate for safety reasons, but if a, if a group has got it like a coffee urn or something in there right now, I think to take it out is just, just would, would not go over very well. As long as it's not presenting a safety concern, I just question the timing of it. And also in Sealeys Bay, because we are doing work there this summer, I think all the groups have been asked to remove any personal things and that may, any personal pieces of equipment that belong to different service groups. So, and maybe anything that needs to be addressed, any larger amounts of expenditure wise that needs to be addressed in Sealeys Bay. Maybe that's something that should really wait, even though I know the, the repurposing, the repurposing of the fire hall, we're really looking more at the main level and not the upstairs, but maybe that is something that needs to be considered as part of that package. But those are my feelings.
Councillor Maybe, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and through you. My number one question was the capacity of one Lansdowne community hall and the Sealeys Bay hall. And for some odd reason, I don't think that that has to be true. Because the Sealeys Bay hall would fit into the Lansdowne hall twice in square footage. So that's where I'm kind of going is, is, cause Lansdowne community hall has had a lot more than a hundred and eighty people in it, more than one occasion that I can recall. So I'm wondering where those numbers may have come from, or whether there's something else that we're not aware of that actually makes that capacity where it is. As well as the kitchen that's in the Lansdowne community hall is certainly a larger kitchen and much more industrial to support larger functions as it has in the past than Sealeys Bay. And Sealeys Bay kitchen itself does need a redesign to accommodate a capacity of two hundred with whatever's going on there. So we do need to see something done there to improve it, as well as the bar area in all these spaces. But to gut it and redo it, I don't think that's needed because again, the cabinet world that I was in at one point, a lot of this could be redone, repurposed and redone or refinished to meet the standards and/or capped for stainless steel cleanliness or the purposes that it requires. One other thing that I seen in this report was talked about pest control. So I put a question mark there. So I don't know really what posed me to do that because there was talk about pest control in this report too. And I'm not sure what your thoughts are on that. But the other thing is that a lot of community people within our community put into all these buildings and have very much been a part of this, this fabric that we call community. And I think we need to really look at how we're servicing them as pointed out already. And to me, even option A, because some of option A, you can get replacement dishes that maybe match. So let's upgrade it to maybe more of a standard of maybe something that's there and just add on to it if it's possible, so that we actually do have a matched set. But having them there for the community groups, because not all community groups have a lot of money to spend on renting a premise or renting dishes, certainly weddings and stuff like that. There's sometimes a, a budgetary application there that they can do, but I think we really need, need to be cognizant of, of this is a community buildings that which we, we need to look after for our community. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Before we answer all of Brian's questions, I, I just want to give a high level reason for why we're bringing this report to council. Yes, with the building being empty in Sealeys Bay currently, this, this was, well, not optimal. This was the time for us to look at that because it's empty. And we're looking for guidance from council on, on how we move forward, how we move back into the building, how we use the space, all those kinds of things. It, it not only how, how we outfit, outfit the building or outfit the building, but also, you know, what the use will be as we go forward, as we're doing this, the visioning of the facility. So giving them, we are looking at the entire building and giving them the guidance on sort of what the expectation is, what we're trying to accomplish when, when we're doing that project as well. The biggest challenge for us, and Jonathan can speak to this better than me, is when, when they were doing an inventory of the dishes, like when, when you wash the dishes, we have the, the three, three sink process up there, which, which is good, that, that satisfies a lot of the requirements. But it hasn't been used the way that it should be. When the dishes are cleaned, they're supposed to be wrapped so that you know that they're secure, they're safe and the next group that goes to use them, that, you know, they're not going to be contaminated. That, that's not what's happening up there. The, the plates were, some of them were stuck together. There were some feces on, on some of the plates. And, and this is the image that, that we're, we're putting out there to the public because it, it's not just the community groups that are using this. We have weddings, we have different events that happen there. We don't know who's in that building and, and this is on the, the township's health unit approval. So as, as we put this space that we're saying, this is safe and secure and, and anybody that comes in, you know, you can use what's in there. Some of the, the urns, et cetera, there, they belong to different groups. Well, when the next groups come in and, and they use it, are we then responsible for fixing them if they're damaged because they're, they're in a municipal building? So trying to get some of that guidance from council on how you guys want us to, to move forward with this, what we should be providing, what we should be upfitting. In terms of the, the investment in the facility, if we go to a dishwasher to ensure that everything is washed appropriately, we will trigger a building permit. And once we trigger a building permit, then that, that room, that space has to be brought up to code. And bringing it up to code means that we have to do all the rest of that work with the surfaces, with the, the proper ventilation, et cetera. And, and that's why the, the high dollar value for having that, the plates, et cetera, in there, that's why that's there is for that, that exact reason. So I just, I wanted to share that before Jonathan talked to some of your questions about occupancy and all that type of stuff.
Thank you. So we did an update assessment on our occupancy levels and it's based on your square footage with fire code, building code, washroom accessibilities, accessibility standards and your egress. So some of the previous numbers didn't really show a true aspect of what it should be at. I'm sure there's been more than two hundred and fifty people upstairs and in that hall. But we kind of put a, a general cap at two fifty as a square number. It probably by legal terms could take two sixty, two seventy. But if you take into effect that you're booking a hall for two hundred and fifty people, you have people back a house that are part of that as well. The square footage for the community hall in Sealeys Bay is only for the hall. It isn't the back of house. So that, we kind of have a buffer zone there for, for standards there. The meeting room, however, for the size of it, it actually has a capacity of seventy people. But I don't know if you'd want to fit seventy people in there sitting down. And this also takes into effect standing versus seated versus tables and chairs and serving. So all those kind of things, factors shrink. And these are the, the, the round numbers that we came up with based on the square footage that's available plus the egress. So. The community hall is our, in Sealeys Bay is two hundred and seventy-seven square meters versus the community hall in Lansdowne is two hundred and two. So you have seventy-five square meters more in Sealeys Bay. Now that doesn't include the stage area in Lansdowne. So it's just the.
Sorry, there's, there's no way that square footage is right. I, I would bet on that one. Sorry, I, I just have to interject there because Lansdowne is much bigger facility than the Sealeys Bay hall.
They're not square, square. Lansdowne is different as far as shape.
No, I do realize that, but this was based on recent measurements with their engineer student as well. So.
Cause I, I think one of the things that was discussed earlier is whether the two numbers were inverted because it was thinking that.
Well, that's where I was kind of going to.
That Sealeys Bay is a smaller hall and would have smaller capacity than Lansdowne.
Can't we get verification?
Yeah, we can verify that.
We, we can take that back and, and double check the numbers for sure. We can do that.
Sorry, I'll keep going if you have more answers to questions. Or was that it?
That was the main one.
That was it. But I did have one other point to make if I could. And that comes down to the groups that are actually using it. Cause I have had other, had other facilities where people have urns in their, their favorite dessert dishes, let's say, and there's a lock cupboard. So different, different groups had locked cupboards purposely for that, so they could use their own stuff. That doesn't mean that we don't have the right to inspect it to make sure it's still safe and legal to use. So that's where I kind of think that that might be a possibility because if we want to promote the community to use the buildings, so you need to have their stuff they want, they want to use.
Councillor Grelle, do you want to get in on this? And then I'm going to go to you. Which option were you looking for? A? Okay, go ahead councillor.
Thank you to you, through you, your worship. It is a complex report and it, it doesn't say enough to make me feel confident about voting for any of these options, to be honest. I was asking a council person earlier before this meeting began, what are the uses? We don't have any indication of how many people are using these things, like how many weddings were there? How many this type of event, this type of event that requires all of this chinaware as an example? In that we are, and I'm going to ramble a bit here, in that we are looking to repurpose or, or should I say, determine what we want to do with the Sealeys Bay hall. I suspect it shall remain there and it will be public use of some sort. I don't see us fully equipping three of these three units. That seems absurd to me. If the rental issue is hard for people and, and very, very challenging, because that would have been my first, hey, if I'm having a wedding, I'll go do the rental thing. But if that doesn't work, then I'm looking at the hybrid here. The hybrid meaning you take, and this also helps, I think with the idea of spreading some of the cost. So you take the hybrid for the first unit and the first unit, I guess, should be Lansdowne hall, perhaps. And put your stuff there while we determine precisely what we're doing with Sealeys Bay. And I'm not even sure the, what, what is the Lansdowne meeting room? I'm not.
The seniors room up top.
Oh, the seniors room up top.
Sorry, we call it the seniors room.
Okay, that's new to me. And I'm a senior. I should know that. So again, I'm not sure any of these suit my thinking. I would like a little more information on how many weddings. It was pointed out to me that we're a low cost and that's great. Low cost for these sorts of things. And I do know the cost of venues and it's thousands compared to hundreds. That's a very nice thing to offer people. However, that should come with some responsibility. And I thought that if you were running any kind of meal, that there had to be someone in that kitchen staff that was qualified by the health unit. And then you make that person responsible for the cleanup and you put their name on it, just like we do when we're doing special events. You know, you emphasize that this is not just, hey, come in here, this ain't the old Lions Club deal. Like let's, let's get at it. You're professionals now, you know, for that night. And, and emphasize that that has to happen. And my last question that isn't addressed here is as I was reading all of them, there was quite an emphasis on staff time. So I have no idea what staff time is now to deal with it. And number two, does any of this increase staff time? Because that's the famous service levels that we offer, right? And every budget day we are talking, it's what kind of service levels do you want to offer the township? Well, this is a reasonable one, but I am not in favor of increasing staff time to deal with this. Hence my emphasis on the person who is renting or whatever, volunteer or not, they have to understand if they want the privilege of being in there for a few hundred bucks, it comes with the idea that you are responsible for proper cleanup. I'm not sure to the level of bagging plates and everything, but I think that that needs to be emphasized. So I don't know if that suits any of my, any of these, to be honest.
Think I might have a solution because there's been a number of questions that have come out of this, which I think are, and I'm going to get to you, Deputy Mayor Foddy. But we have some people sort of on the fence of one option over another. I've got a clear option here, a clear option here, not so clear at all. And I have some suggestions as well, but I'm, I would like to go to Deputy Mayor Foddy. We may defer this to the next meeting and then get some additional information. And I think this is helpful for, helpful for staff to clear up the mud puddles, so to speak, if you will. So go ahead Deputy Mayor Foddy.
Thank you worship through you. First off, these buildings are the heartbeats of the community, plain and simple. You can hold a function there in a snowstorm, rainstorm, lightning storm, they're the heartbeats. So we have to, we have to maintain them. There've been a lot of good comments here made by members, other members of council. I'm not going to duplicate. What I would prioritize when I read here that we have bare wood in a kitchen counter setting or a refrigerator that's about to malfunction, these are health standard issues. That's a red flag, a great big red flag. We have to get these facilities, if we're going to open them to public, they have to be maintained to health standard as councillor Grelle had indicated. Excuse me, I like councillor Grelle's idea of having someone designated. You sign right here, your problem. Do we charge? What did I say? A retainer fee to rent these halls? And then if everything's great and kosher, it's refundable? Right, right. I'm going to drift a little bit. When I was on the road hauling hazmat, if you were the first time to attend this chemical plant, have you ever been here before, sir? And if you have, where's your sticker on your hard hat? Because they, you have proof of that. And if you have not, you have to watch usually fifteen minute, maybe twenty, depending on the size of the facility, video. Why don't we make a video up? They're not hard to make. We got the facility and the people and I know how to do it. And whoever's going to sign on, you have to watch that video and then sign off that you read it. So when you're all finished, the plates need to go back and look like this. I didn't know you could wrap dishes. I'm not going to suggest that to my wife, but I was curious to hear that. But nonetheless, I think it needs to be standardized, the expectations from the people renting all. But if you're looking for an option for me, I like what I heard from, for three members of council. Let's keep the cost down. Let's spread the, the cost out if we can. But prioritize where the real serious problems are. I'll just leave it at that for now. I'm not going to specify any one item. I'd like to join A and B and then cherry pick the best. I'll just leave it at that. Thanks.
So I'll let councillor Antoine Hartley and then I'll make some comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So there is a rental agreement. I've signed a few of them now that, that does tell you how to, where the garbage goes, how, how things are supposed to be maintained. So there already is somebody responsible for those things. I don't think we were the ones that left the, the sticky dishes, but anyways, those, that's already in place. So if people are following their rental agreement and then there's a, I think it's only a hundred dollars fee for, and if, if everything's left the way it should be, you get that money back.
So there's only a one hundred dollar damage deposit at this point? Yeah, okay.
The problem, may I?
Go ahead.
Through you, your worship. The problem I have with that theory is for a hundred bucks, you can walk away. Forfeit your hundred dollars and we're going to spend five hundred on staff time to fix the problem. That's not enough. No, I mean, not enough money. It's not enough responsibility, incentive. You know, you want to put some money down because it's got to cover somebody's cost to clean up the mess. We can't have people thinking that's good enough. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. One more.
Thank you worship through you. I just thought of the other issue I wanted to make. We want to be awful careful outfitting two community rooms in the same building in Lansdowne. Like all you gotta do is walk, if you're going to put on that kind of a gala event for food, walk downstairs and how about it? And pay that one. I'm not real receptive to putting stoves and fridges and whatever else might be required in the seniors room when everything is downstairs available to you. I, that, that just seems wrong to me. Thank you.
So I'm going to jump in now. So I, you know, I really appreciate the staff's time and effort that they have taken to try to come up with. So I, you know, I really appreciate the staff's time and effort that they have taken to try to come up with these different solutions. Because I do believe that the use of these buildings have waned because of the lack of consistency of access to um, whether it's, you know, fridges, elevators, dishes, whatever. You know, I, I know that a friend of mine who got married not that long ago in the community building in Lansdowne was very distressed to pull up and find all the um, colored masking tape that was on the floor at the community building uh, for the pickleballers, you know, it from a, from a, if you, you talk about a bride on a budget, this is not a picky person, but then when you've got things that you don't really want in your wedding photos or what have you. So um, I do think that I will look to one of the members of council for a deferral for a number of reasons and we can have further discussion and you can make other suggestions to staff afterwards as well. I think we've had a pretty good conversation here, but one of the things that I would like to bring up is that on the vein that Deputy Mayor Foddy made about these are public buildings, the, we are expected to have a certain rate, like the fridge has to work, stove has to work, we have to have clean surfaces, we've got to meet the health unit guidelines, all of those sorts of things. You know, wrapping the dishes, that's a new one for me as well. I didn't realize, but to your point, it would be easy to say, this is how you leave the building. This is how you found it, this is how you have to leave, you need, this is your checklist, what have you. And to your point, you know, you watch the video and, and sign off. Or if you've been a renter in the past, maybe you can forego it. However, these are not insignificant funds to the point that Counselor Grelle has made. And I do also agree that these are um, the heart of most of our communities that bring people together, keep people together and also uh, support one another. Because lots of fundraisers are had in these buildings that support other very important things that happen in our community. So my question is for Mr. Treasurer as he looks up. So uh, Mr. Treasurer, would it be something that could be considered that instead of using taxpayer dollars? I, I know this may be on the cusp because I know that the casino funds are supposed to be used for infrastructure. I would assume like the fixes to the actual countertops and fridges and stuff can be done through the casino funds. Dishes, I'm not sure of, but my point being is that um, if we budgeted in the future, because as we are backing off our dependency on the casino funding year over year, that is what's happened over the last couple of years, that we can potentially take or allocate some of those funds to figure out a project like this rather than putting it on the levy. Is that something that can be considered, Mr. Treasurer?
Through you, Mayor, uh, yeah, certainly. And uh, I would say as we're backing off the dependence, um, we're doing that with a specific transfer to this special projects reserve fund. So that is building up aggressively as we back off. So that would be an option to, to.
Fund it through a special project.
To fund it through that, because that's kind of what we're using to offset the dependence on the, to create a bit of a flow through. But uh, yeah, certainly a bunch of time we can work that out.
So I bring that up and thank you for that edification. I bring that up so that council can, because we're, we have funding that we give to our community groups for, you know, good work in the community. And this to me is sort of like a double dip because we're sort of giving back to ourselves, but we're still giving to the community. Because we're giving uh, a better situation that they can rent these halls at a reasonable cost and have fundraising dinners or weddings or other events to support community function. And it's not on the taxpayer levy, it's in the casino fund. So that's where I'd like to, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, your worship, through you. So um, are we looking at a hybrid resolution then? Where uh, perhaps staff can go and cost out what it would need, what we would need to deal with the immediate safety issues? And um, if we can say if it's less than fifty thousand bucks to deal with the countertops and the fridges? Or and we could take up to that much or pick a number that's where everybody's comfortable with. We can proceed to do that. And we would defer the rest of the
Toll budget?
To toll budget. And then we could get all our information filled.
Through you, Mayor, and uh, just to add on to that, if, if you were to go forward that today to address those immediate concerns, I would just make sure that it says it's to come from the special project reserve fund.
Okay.
Because there definitely is money in that reserve fund currently that we could tap into to address those needs right now, if you so wish.
Okay. So I guess my, my suggestion to council is that someone make a motion to defer and come back to, just let me finish. That we come back to the next meeting with additional information and potentially um, slightly different options based on the feedback you received tonight. Is that clear enough for staff? I don't want to go, but I, I think there was a number of questions asked here tonight that can be more clear. So, so yes, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, through you. Keep in mind, both these villages have ample competition up to these buildings. And Lansdowne's land agriculture society, granted, they don't put on winter functions in that red building, but with their kitchen removed in a separate little building and the volunteers, they do a great job of catering weddings and what have you, anniversaries in that red building. And then, of course, Sealy's Bay has got the Legion and we just help on them with the, with an air conditioning unit. That's great, but what I'm saying is we have to bring these buildings of ours up to a comparable level for the public to even want to rent them.
So Mr. Maybe, you'll make that motion to defer to council? And we have Counselor Kelman uh, making, seconding the motion to defer. So maybe. Kelman, any discussion on the deferral and any other information that you'd like staff to bring back? So that the deferral is clear? Go ahead, Counselor Grelle.
Thank you, through you, 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 your worship. So it was brought forward by the CAO that perhaps a sum of money could be laid aside before we get to the budget process starting later in the year. If we were going that route, I would like staff to tell us exactly and precisely where that money's going. In other words, infrastructure improvements to include exactly what? That shouldn't be a hard thing. You've already outlined a number of things. So for my benefit, it would be order the infrastructure improvements and then the uh, dishwashers and whatnot, precisely what you think would be needed, divided up by the three units so that we know precisely what we're voting on. Because it's not a bad idea, you know, get it, get it moving. And also August is kind of a poor month for us in terms of making decisions. So maybe we could give you something to work on, some monies to work with. And I do appreciate there are probably, I, I'd just like it to be infrastructure related, not the dishes, not silverware. You know, we can go to the score in Rockville and get some dishes.
So the motion, the motion to defer is on the table, moved by Counselor Maybe, seconded by Counselor Kelman, all those in favor of deferral till the next council meeting? So we will have further information at the next council meeting next week? Is that okay? We'll track, okay. If, if there is a challenge getting some of the quotes on, say, a new fridge freezer or something, they'll, they'll get some quotes, but I think I understand what you're saying is that the immediate need, they will be able to come back.
It can escalate so quickly, it's been my experience for seven years, that things get out of hand in a hurry. So I would just like to
Be clear.
Be very cautious, be very cautious about our spending, but it is a great idea. Thank you.
Perfect. So the next motion that's on the floor is a temporary borrowing bylaw moved by Deputy Mayor Foddy, seconded by Counselor Antoine Hartley, that the committee of the whole recommends that council grant three readings and final passage to bylaw number twenty twenty-five dash zero three six, being a bylaw to provide for a temporary borrowing by the municipality when required as attached corporate services twenty twenty-five dash zero one eight. So the motion's on the floor, up for discussion. Go ahead, Counselor Maybe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you. Uh, again, you're asking for three million dollars. Is this to be approved every year or every three years? Uh, and is this year one?
Through you, Mayor, uh, it gets approved on an annual basis at a minimum. So it, it's basically our overdraft or our line of credit on our bank account. So it'll be set at three million and that will become the new standard. And then every year you bring a temporary borrowing bylaw just to reconfirm that. So typically we do that in December or January.
And it would be for three million each, each year instead of the one million that we're presently doing.
That'll be the new limit will be three million.
Okay, thank you.
Any other hands? I have, oh, go ahead, Counselor Grelle.
Is uh, perhaps a brief overview from, from the treasurer as to why three million, um, when one million? And we are only talking covering costs. So I would just wonder why a million dollars or a million and a half doesn't cover it? Why three million? What is the escalation there that has triggered that thinking? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, through you, Mayor. So part of where the number three million came from was I looked around at neighboring municipalities to see kind of based on a tax levy percentage, what most municipalities carry as an appropriate load. Typically, they're around twenty to twenty-five, there were some really higher ones, but they typically were in the twenty to twenty-five percent of their tax levy is what they would carry in their overdraft. So that's kind of partly where three million came from. What prompted this was um, through the experience with the new fire hall and putting that out and internally financing that construction. So right now we have about just over seven million in what we call unfinanced capital that we've put out over the years through the construction of the fire hall. It's just under seven million. So that kind of, between that and the way our current tax collection policy is, it kind of highlighted that we could run into in the future as we continue to do projects of certain sizes. You could run into cash flow considerations prior to collecting on your taxes in September. So one of our challenges here is we only collect taxes two times a year in March. You get about half, just under half, forty-five percent. And then we don't collect the rest till the end of September. And the tax levies are our main source of income. The majority of our work and capital expenditures typically happen before the end of the summer with large road projects or other various projects. So we are finding now that we are completing these larger capital projects that we can be possibly entering into pinch points. The other part that brought it up is some of the, if we are fortunate enough in the coming years to get some of the large grants we've applied for, particularly with the water tower and potentially some other projects, sometimes with those, often with those grant projects, we're putting the cash out as we're doing the project. And then you report on what you spent and then you get the money back. So a lot of it is upfront on the township. So it's, it's really just to have that at a more appropriate level that if need be, now's a good time to increase it rather than waiting to be in a pickle or in a situation in the future. It's uh, just prudent to have that now. Um, and part of it is with the fire hall being completed now, we entered into discussions to get a fire or a loan for that long-term project. So we just thought through those discussions, well, now's a good time to also increase this, we're doing it all kind of together.
And just for other edification of the public that are listening and, and counselors here, when's the last time we actually used our line of credit?
I don't believe we ever have. I asked BMO that question too, and they could never find the time we had. We're not planning on going into it. And I would also emphasize, I, I didn't put it in the report. There is no cost to the township for having this. So typically with commercial enterprises, if there's a line of credit, oftentimes they'll have what's a standby charge. So even they might pay a point two five, like a quarter point, even on the line of credit they're not using, just for the privilege of having that. We don't pay anything. So we only pay it if we go into it, there's no standby charge. And even if we did go into it, it's prime less, so which is also pretty favorable rate. So um, we're, it's a pretty favorable um, finance tool to have.
So I would just say that um, the goal is to not use it. And speaking as someone who works in a finance business, it's way easier to ask for funds when you, before you need them than being in the middle of it. So if we got into a cash flow crunch, because say the provincial government had promised us funds for whatever project and we had completed it, but they just didn't process it for an extra seven weeks. But our tax flow hadn't started back and then we get in a precarious situation. We don't ever want to be in a situation where we would question whether we could make payroll. We've never had that issue. We've never, we've always had uh, strong uh, savings, if you will, reserve funds that make it easier. But speaking from experience, it's easier to ask for the umbrella when the sun shine out than it is when it starts to rain. Go ahead.
Uh, through you, Mayor, I would also just emphasize the temporary borrowing by law. It, it is not for capital expenditures, it can't be used for capital expenditures.
Just cash.
You're not allowed to use it for capital expenditures, those have to be funded through long term.
That answers it.
And that's the whole thing. So I just want to emphasize that as well.
Would it be prudent or is it a bad ask that council would be uh, apprised of uh, any significant borrowings?
Cash flow cr-.
Cash flow crunches would, you know, so nothing, so it's transparent, like if something was to come up, is that an unreasonable ask?
Go ahead.
Through you, Mayor, uh, yeah, so if we were to ever go into it and use the temporary borrowing, I think it would be prudent and best interest that report on the council to say such that we did use temporary borrowing and um, list what the cost of that borrowing was.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship, through you, just to our money man for clarity. So you're saying if you tapped into it at one million and you got up to two point three, but you paid it back in late October as uh, as the rest of the taxes come in, there's no charge for it then? Or very little?
There's interest.
Right, yeah, so if we did, if we, through you, Mayor, if we did draw on it, we would pay interest on what we draw for the time that it's been drawn. Currently that it's prime less point five. So currently the bank prime is four point nine five, so our current rate would be four point four five.
Right.
Um, what I'm saying is when we're not using it, there's no charge associated with having that in place.
Whereas some businesses get charged just to have it in place on a monthly fee.
Like an operating capital.
Correct.
Right. And so this would uh, conceivably only look, you're only looking at it maybe four or five month window of the year from about now till the end of October?
Yeah, that, that's correct. So typically there's certain pinch points in the year based around your tax collection. It can happen sometimes at the end of the year before you get your first installment, um, that I've seen in other municipalities. But yeah, typically it's very short term. In the municipal act, it's referred to as temporary borrowing for that very reason. And it's very specific that it needs to be paid back and it's not meant to sit there for any significant length of time. And it's basically built around the cash flows of tax collection essentially.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to call the question at this point, all those in favor? All those opposed and it is carried. Thank you for the explanation, Phil. Moving on to nine point three, vesting of failed tax sale property moved by Counselor Maybe, seconded by Counselor Antoine Hartley, that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve the vesting of the vacant property with rule number zero eight one two eight one two dash zero four zero dash one three six zero zero in accordance with section three seven nine seven point one of the municipal act and that the committee of the whole recommends that council authorize staff to write off the taxes in the amount of eleven thousand, two dollars and six cents for rule number zero eight one two dash eight one two dash zero four zero dash one three six zero zero on the land vested by the municipality for the vested property listed in accordance with section three five four two A and three of the municipal act. Discussion on the motion. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, through you. I can see this piece of property every day of my life and have. When this property changed hands a few years ago, the larger portion and this little piece was sold to the same person. And am I reading this right? They chose not to pay the taxes just because it was kind of an irrelevant piece? Because it was for sale at one time.
Through you, Mayor, uh, I'm honestly not aware of that, I don't, I don't know that for certain. I, yeah, I can't really speak to that.
Okay, well, it might be out of bounds to ask the question, but it come up as a red flag to me because like I said, I, I can see the property from my property, my property. And uh, it, it just set up a red flare to me that somebody would buy the complete property and includes this little piece across the road. Because the road was that little diagram you have, I should mention for those that I should mention for those that don't know the road, the diagram, that little hump you see there, the road is on the outer curve of that hump. And rather than go through the rock, we have equipment nowadays that could go through that curve pretty simply in a matter of about a day and a half. But for what reason to speed up the road on a gravel, speed up, speed limits on a gravel road, I'm not sure. But getting back to it, I that's how I perceive this, but I'm not going to pursue it now. My thought on this one, I'm on the microphone, would be just to drop it. Retain it, bring it back to the township for that very reason. If we ever wanted it, some future council decided they wanted to put a four lane highway on San Bay Road from County Road three to the lake. This would be a nice piece to just make disappear.
Well, that's exactly what we're doing here tonight. It's becoming ours. So provided that council votes in favor. So with that, I will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed and it is carried. Thank you. Next item is appointment of a deputy chief building official. And the motion is moved by councillor Kelvin, seconded by councillor Gurrell. At the committee, the whole recommend that council grant three readings and final passage to bylaw number twenty twenty five dash zero three four attached to report twenty twenty five dash zero four six. As exhibit A being a bylaw to appoint a deputy chief building official, Stephen Miller, for the purpose of enforcing a building code act and bylaws of the township. Discussion on the motion. Go ahead, councillor Gurrell.
Thank you. And through you, your worship, have we had any sense of the longevity of of Mr. Miller's commitment? Are we allowed to ask that question of Mr. Miller? Or is that verboten under the employment act?
I think that any discussion on people's tenure or future tenure is probably not for open discussion. However, I believe if we go back to the discussion that the planner had, the main reason and rationale for this is to ensure that when the CBO is not here, that there is someone else that can sign off in the meantime. Until we have a full-time CBO. Is that correct, Madam Planner? Okay, I have a nodding of the head. Regarding longevity, I know that the building department is still going to be looking for over further on down the year, I believe, looking for a permanent CBO. Correct? Isn't that what you had told us at the last meeting?
Through you. With respect to the deputy CBO position, it is a position that we need. It's not adding to any staff complement. It's just working within existing staff complement to appoint a deputy chief building official, as you've indicated, so that when the chief building official is out of the office, we have somebody that can perform their duties, particularly given that our chief building official is now a contract employee working on a part-time basis. We were not successful in our recruitment for the chief building official and will be hopefully going back out later this year or early in the new year. And at that point, then we would determine what our staffing complement will look like going forward.
Any other questions in regards to this appointment in this motion? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed and it is carried. Unopened road allowance policy moved by councillor Kelvin, seconded by councillor Gurrell. The committee, the whole recommend that council give three readings and final passage to bylaw number twenty twenty five dash zero three six being a bylaw authorizing unopened road allowance policy in the form attached to planning report number twenty twenty five dash zero four eight as exhibit A. Discussion on the motion. Go ahead, councillor Kelvin and then councillor Maybe.
Thank you, your worship and through you. I just wanted to say, I think this is an excellent kind of housekeeping by law. I particularly like that it's eliminating the the need to post notices in newspapers because we had the discussion in April that we don't really have any widely read local newspaper now that it would make sense to publish and it makes much more sense to mail directly the property owners that are rebutting the property in question. I also really like that it allows staff to close files within within a timely amount of time. And I I just wanted to clarify because it we're removing the need to have a public meeting that is specifically for questions of unopened road allowances, not other types, other issues that would normally entitled be entitled to a public meeting.
Through you, that's correct. Just for unopened road allowances and any input is ideally received in writing by the people that have been notified and we can address it in our reports when we bring them forward. Thank you. Councillor Maybe, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and through you. It's good to see that we're streamlining this process as well as the paper as alluded to by councillor Kelvin, that we are able to move this forward at a quicker pace than it has been in the past. So very good report. Thank you very much.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed and it is carried. Next item is staff reports. Motion comes from councillor Kelvin, seconded by councillor Gurrell that the staff reports for information be received and filed. There are two reports. Milestone recognition certificate program update and fire services six month review. Any items you would like to get further information on or clarity on? Councillor Gurrell and then councillor Kelvin and then Deputy Mayor Foddy.
Thank you. And through you, your worship. It might be just a little bit outside a six-month review, but if the fire chief could from the discussion of of breaking an agreement with front of young fire service. I it was brought to my attention that there is sort of a secondary agreement that wouldn't involve any money and I've offhand forgotten the name of it. It's not mutual aid. It's a step up. Automatic aid. Is that something that we have pursued? And is that something we should pursue? With the adjacent township. Thank you.
Through your worship, yes, absolutely. We'd be looking to go into, we already have mutual aid with them. So in the event that we have a call in that end of the township, we can activate them for tankers or manpower, whatever we need. But we could also look at an automatic aid agreement as well.
And is that costless? That's just in it? Is it a written agreement?
It's a written agreement as well. We've got this similar agreement with Rita Lakes, Ganunakwe, Kingston. We'll have one shortly with South Frognac as well for some coverage and Athens. So.
Okay, thank you. And then we don't require a notice of motion to bring that forward. We can expect that to be taken care of? Or would you prefer it to be more formalized?
I would imagine we'd be bringing it just as a as a report to council for to make sure that the agreement is okay with council.
Okay. In order for me to sign it or the chief to sign it, I believe it still has to come to council.
Great.
Okay. Any other question? Oh, sorry. I have councillor Kelvin, then Deputy Mayor Foddy and then councillor Maybe.
Thank you, your worship and through you. I just wanted to say how impressed I was with this fire services review. I've said it before, I think it's an emergency response service that we always hope we will never need to have. But if we need to have them, if we needed our lives off and depend upon it. And we're so fortunate in a small rural community that really depends entirely on volunteer employees. We're so fortunate to have so many that are willing to step up. I was particularly impressed with the levels of certification. We're almost at a hundred percent for the first level. I was very impressed with the number of new recruits since January fifteen, since January for the for the size of the service that we have. I think that's very significant. I think it was, I'm I'm really pleased the chief noted that three have signed up for fire station two, the new station since it opened. We talked about when we were in the in the process of approving that building that it would be attractive to new recruits and I think that's already proving true. And I was really impressed with the number of students that have passed through the training center in the last six months, almost a hundred and sixty, sixty-two of them from this township. So I just think it's really exemplary for a small, a small municipality, a small service to have numbers like this. And I'm sure it comes from the top down. So thank you, Chief.
Deputy Mayor Foddy.
Thank you, your worship through you. The very last sentence on page one of this report states that attend any mayor or councillors may attend any event are subject to the clerk's discretion and members availability. I have to be bold and ask why the clerk's discretion if I choose to attend a ribbon cutting for.
Are you talking about the milestone recognition?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I was like, I'm like, what? We can't go to fire training?
I should have clarified that. No, if I choose to attend, I've already attended a few ribbon cuttings or grand openings for small businesses. And I just thought this seemed a little bit odd, to be quite honest. Do I have to get permission? Or is this permission granted? Should somebody call in and then it's distributed? Is that the way it would be?
Yeah, through you, your worship. It would, because it comes through the clerk's office and then I would make sure that it would be okay with you, that you're available. And then I would give them that feedback if if somebody from the public requested that through me.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarity. Now I'll clarify it. I'm talking about fire services now. Before we miss it, I just looked up the date, June the twenty first, our firefighters, our roads crews and all their heads were dispersed in a matter of what, an hour? When the wind come down and sent trees everywhere, hydro wires everywhere. I mean, it was a pretty dangerous few hours there. The chief would know better than any of the rest of us sitting here. But, you know, I took a little township tour, I guess you would call it, up through June Town, which was the worst area hit as far as the amount of trees done damage. And thank goodness Mother Nature was kind enough to line most of them up with the fence rows and not put them across the road. But nonetheless, heard a lot of good stories, but the good news was the tour that I took on Sunday evening, just say twenty-four hours later, every road was open. So hats off to all the works department and everybody knew how to run a chainsaw. I know there's a lot of volunteers. There's a lot of residents in the township pitched in on that as well. And hats off to everybody because touch wood, nobody suffered any more than a lot of downed trees.
Thank you. Go ahead, councillor Maybe and then councillor Antoine Hartley. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great to see the milestone recognition certificate program happening because I know I asked about it last fall for some somebody. And glad to see that we've got that instituted and ready to go. On the fire services line, it's also great to see that the certification level that we have is up up at that level. Considering it's all mandatory now, but the fire departments have worked very hard in attaining that. And thanks to our training center, it also has helped quite a bit. The other point of interest for me is the fire prevention is how busy the fire prevention officer is and how much he's actually done. It seems like in a short time that he has been with the department. So I find that that is a well-represented help to the community in keeping everybody safe. So again, a very good report and thank you very much.
Go ahead, councillor Antoine Hartley.
Thank you, your worship. I would echo what everyone else has said here too. June twenty first, that storm that hit, I have heard nothing but praise for the township and the firefighters for what they did for Ellisville Park. That that trailer park got hit really hard. It's only I can walk to it in five minutes. And I was fine where I was, but they really got hit. And that, as I said, I've heard nothing but praise for how quickly you are on site and how how compassionate everyone was in in the days afterwards as well as they tried to deal with the issues that came around that. So thank you.
Any further?
Wall staff.
Any further questions in regards to the two information reports? I will just say that the milestone recognition certificate program was already instituted prior to the official launching of the program this evening. We did it ad hoc as people would ask and never, I don't recall ever saying no to anybody. So just to reassure the public, we've already sort of been doing this. This is just making it a bit more streamlined and specific.
And through your worship, there's a form online that people can fill out now so that we get those requests directly through the website.
Right. So and I will be speaking to something we did on the weekend in my mayor's update. So with that, I will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed and it is carried. Moving on to information items. Any information items? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and to you. My information is the thirty-two bridge four oh one, just north of Gan. It talks about closures and I'm just wondering if anybody has any information on that of what they're doing, how long they're planning on having the ramps closed and whatever they're doing. Thank you.
There was an email that came in today, which I believe I forwarded on to the director. I did not. Yes, it's starting. Essentially, they're doing bridge work at thirty-two on the overpass. There were supposed to be a call last Friday, which got canceled. So other than that, Director Holiday, do you have any specifics yet?
Thank you through your worship. Just looking at the email that came through today. It looks like there would be from July twentieth, twenty twenty-five to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, there'd be nightly ramp closures from approximately seven PM to six AM on both the north, south and east ramp. Eastbound on ramp and the north, south, west ramp, westbound on ramp. They'll never be closed at the same time. An advanced notification will be posted in advance of any closures. And then during the nightly ramp closures, highway four oh one will be reduced to one lane on either side. The eastbound or westbound directions, only one direction will be affected at a time. And then County Road thirty-two from October first, twenty twenty-five to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, daily lane closures from approximately seven AM to five PM on top of County Road thirty-two structure to facilitate facilitate the asphalt replacement operation. Advanced notification will be posted in advance of any lane closures. At least one lane of traffic will remain open at all times.
So out of that, the twenty first, twentieth is when it starts.
July twentieth.
July twentieth, it's when it starts. The signage has already gone up without the dates. I think they were just trying to, we just got an email from Bray, which is the contractor. And so if you're able to avoid that area getting on and off, obviously that might make life simpler. If you're heading up to a golf course and using that option, we'll have to make sure that nobody misses their tee time. Anyway, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. There was another meeting that is going to happen in regards to Brass Point Bridge. That I forwarded that email as well. Sorry, I listen, there's if I don't, if I don't forward it on to somebody who gets paid to remember all these things, I will not likely make it through the day. So the Brass Point Bridge obviously affects our Sealy's Bay folks. Also, emergency services, I know that they've been dealing or talking with fire, ambulance, that sort of thing. But there's a lot of infrastructure projects happening this summer out and about, and usually they're pretty good about signage. So just pay attention and hopefully if we have any other specifics, go ahead, Mr. Holiday.
Thank you. Just looking at the the email that came through today, they're looking at a two-year closure. Some information will be coming out next week regarding this project. And then they will be hosting a virtual information session on July thirtieth. So I think next week we'll expect to see the information regarding the July thirtieth information session. And everybody can can tune into that and.
We'll make sure that it's posted on our socials so that we can let as many people know as possible. If we can make a note of that, please, Director Holiday. Thank you. Okay. Any other information items? I have nothing. Moving on to rise and report minutes from committees, working groups and local boards. Excuse me. Trying to think back to CRCA. Our board had to deal with a hearing on a property in Elizabetha Kitley, which went forward. And my memory is blanking right now. Now that this is on the agenda, I will do better to have my report ready in the future. Go ahead, councillor Gurrell.
Yeah, just a very small point on the CRCA in their newsletter that went out, just a very small point, it mentioned regulation one forty-eight oh six, that actually has been changed to, I don't know, forty-one, twenty-four or something. So it's not a big deal to the public, but that has been revoked.
We will make note of that. This would also be a good place to have an update from peer in the future as well. This would also be a good place to have an update from peer in the future as well. If we could ask for Tracy to submit just an information report in regards to that. Any other working groups or local boards we'd like to see more of? Because if we standardize it, then we make sure that things get done. Go ahead councillor Kelman.
I was just going to say, we didn't have a library board meeting last month, but. I will I will I will include a brief, very brief library board report when there is.
Yeah, afterwards. Thank you.
And if I may, just a question on the. Sports and recreation is.
Oh, that, sports and recreation.
Is that moving forward nicely?
Go ahead, Mr. Holiday.
Thank you, your worship. So we've we've had our town halls, our initial town halls in in the three different districts or wards. We have we have the survey currently out. It closes at the end of this month, so we're looking to to get as many people to submit. Response or or get, you know, take that information back from the survey. And then when that closes, we will be meeting again with the the rec working group and moving forward at that point.
Okay, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Foddy.
Thank you, your worship through you. We should do a plug for our esteemed librarian who's present tonight. Cindy's looking for volunteer readers again this year. I know she has a few that have been advertised, but. That's always fun. I will try and. Pick a date myself this year. I wasn't able to do so last year, but that. Just a reminder, what dates are we looking at again from July tenth through till? Okay.
So we'll. We we will speak to you after the meeting and lock the rest of those dates down for you. Okay. Any other committee or working groups we should have on this? Okay, so any notices of motion? I know there was a notice of motion from Mr. Foddy that, or no. Sorry, Mr. Lackey that had come forward that's supposed to come to council. In regards to the end of Ivy Lee Road and possible emergency. Service stuff. So we'll see that next week. Any other notices of motion? Oh, you have one. Go ahead. Need your microphone on.
I already made.
Yeah, she made the notice of motion at the last meeting. So if there's any other notices of motion we're unaware of, this would be the time. Okay, so we'll move forward with statements or announcements from councillors. I have councillor maybe and councillor Antoine Hartley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and through you. Canada Day was a pretty big success in Ganonakwe and thank you, Madam Mayor, for being there. With two to three thousand people in attendance, I think, maybe two thousand. It felt bigger than that, but it was a good turnout and I. Very glad that it went off as well as it did. La Festive Els will be happening in Ganonakwe, July thirty first to August third for our. Friends from Quebec who've who visit this area. And there is a weather statement for tonight also here, so hopefully the fire department isn't too busy. More Westport and up in that territory. But tomorrow is the first show of season eleven of Amazing Race Canada. And certainly during the show. Will be highlighted, not only Ganonakwe, but the township of Lees and Thousand Islands. So stay tuned and see what you see.
Councillor Antoine Hartley.
Thank you, your worship. So Canada Day in Sealees Bay as well was a huge success. Don't ask me how many people were there. There were people everywhere all day long. We did have a little little supper time. I think we had cranky kids that went home for naps and things, but. It was really nice to see so many people and then you could look out and see just a flood of red. In the park and kids, all the activities that we had for them, face painting and crafts and stuff like that. And I was, it was comical that most of them were playing on the playground structure and having a great time there. We also, it was our first year to have Little Ray's Reptiles. Who came in and did a show and shh, don't tell anybody, but I think we were three times capacity in the legion. For that, but very, very great, a very good day. Weather couldn't ask for better weather, a little bit warm, but it was good. And thank you very much to the township for the community grant. That allowed that to take place and to councillor Kelman and and. The mayor for showing up and 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 walking with me. I had quite a dilemma because I didn't quite know where to walk in the parade. Whether to walk with council, whether to to walk with Sabara, whether or to stand at the end of one of the roads and make sure nobody run. Got run over. So it was a great day and plans are already underway for next year. We have. Going to add something else next year. So thank you very much. It was it was wonderful.
Any other statements or announcements from councillors? Okay, I'll go with the mayor's update. So of course, as mentioned, the Canada Day celebrations were wonderful and I'm very grateful to be invited into. Ganonakwe to speak at the band show. Showcasing a number of talented individuals who I believe all live in the township, actually. The band Chicken Wire. Played that night. And I believe all their members live in the municipality. So they always put on a great show and, you know, to see the. Sea of red, if you will, and all the lawn chairs out on the lawn. And it was a great. Day for weather. It had cooled off by that time. It did get fairly warm in Sealees Bay and earlier in the afternoon. But it was great to see so many people out wearing Canadian pride of shirts and hats and all sorts of things, flags. But that play structure, is there a capacity load on that? Because there definitely was a ton of children. And and the pavilion was packed. There was a lineup for burgers. There was karaoke, which no one got to experience my karaoke because I was too shy. Anyways. I was too, oh, I sing. I did not sing because I don't I don't want anybody to feel bad. Listen, I was in the musicals in high school. I can actually sing. I usually surprise people when I do it. So anyways. But it was a great mix of different things between the parade. I get a freezy every year, which is why I do it is because I get a freezy from. Ridgeway Confections always hand them out to us on the way by. So I very much appreciate the spirit and the excitement. I also got to spend some time with a lady who I believe also turned ninety. And had all of her family. I think she has ten kids that came from Seattle, Calgary, Florida. From all over to see her, Mrs. Dorothy McCann. They had a family wedding and then had a party for her the next day and. She is a pretty formidable woman who has raised a number of children and still can probably. Have more fun than all of us put together. So I got to spend a little time with her after the Sealees Bay event. And then in Ganonakwe, which was a great way to end the day. Landstone Fair starts July seventeenth. Opening ceremonies are at six thirty PM and then I believe the mini king and queen contest begins at six. It's before. I believe. And then, of course, there's lots of things going on. At the fair, please go to their website and social media pages. Fair bands for the midway, I believe, are available up until Tuesday next week or Wednesday next week for a discount, slight discount. Summer break is coming. We only have one more meeting before August. And these extreme weather patterns are a bit unnerving. I'm not going to lie. I know there's lots of people who love storms. I am not one of them. But I would like to end with a very. Exciting thing I got asked to attend yesterday. And I'm very grateful that councillor Gurrell was there at the time that words needed to be said. I unfortunately had other engagements as well, but I did manage to spend some time. But. Mr. Prohaska, Bert Prohaska turned ninety this weekend and he had an incredible turnout of individuals. At the party at the Rockport Barn yesterday. They roasted a pig. There was live music. But I I think what I'd like to highlight the most about Mr. Prohaska is what he has done for our community because he's. He's really the life of the party, but sort of an introvert at the same time is the way best way of putting it in that. He revitalized the Boathouse Country Inn and the Rockport Tavern, along with his son Eric and partner Normand for years. They hosted. Thousands of individuals to our community, made them feel welcome, gave them hospitality and sent them on their way. And still to this day, Eric and Normand have that tradition at the Rockport Barn. Very giving, very open, have lots of great events. But Bert, I think, would give any of us a run for the money as far as energy is concerned at ninety. And he was just genuinely happy to see so many people out to help him celebrate. So to me, that's what community is, is that. Come one, come all and celebrate the good times and. Let's not wait for the bad times, like a tree down to go over, have a cup of coffee with neighbors or what have you. So. That's all I have to say about that. And it was a good day. So thank you councillor Gurrell for saying handing out the certificates. Prior to the passing of the certificate program. But those certificates are there and we're happy to send them along or attend your event should you wish. Okay, so we have no closed session this evening and therefore we're at adjournment and it is seven twenty one. So councillor Kelman is moving and councillor Gurrell is seconding and that the committee the whole adjourned at seven twenty one PM. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it is carried. Thank you, everyone.